Good evening. I'd like to welcome those watching at home and all of those in the audience to the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education tonight, January 14, 2014. And with that call to order, public audience, anyone in the audience wishing to address us? Seeing none out of all of you sitting there, we will move on to Board and Administrative Communications. And we'll start with Jacob.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to the what remains of my term here with the board. So we're approaching the second, end of the second quarter, the halfway mark of the year at all the schools, I guess, and preparations for the Les Mis event, which is coming up at the end of this month into February. The show is going to be Friday, January 31st, Saturday, February 1st, Friday, February 7th, and Saturday, February 8th, all at 7:00 PM, and then also on Sunday, February 2nd and Sunday, February 9th at 2:00 PM. And tickets are between $12 and $15. And I know that all the students who are involved have been putting in a lot of work, so I'm hoping for a good turnout for them. In the Battle of the Bands, we have the qualified groups now, Borealis, Exit Through the Gift Shop, Harmonic Rewalk, Outta Comma, and Paper Radio, and the final competition is on Friday, February 21st. It's always a good event. And this week, on the athletic front, boys' basketball is in Granby on Saturday at 7:00 PM, and girls' hockey is at ISDC at 6:00 PM on Saturday.
Good. Thank you. Welcome back, and this is your last semester. All right. Looking forward to hearing about it. Thank you. Susan?
Nothing to me.
Tom?
Nothing for me.
Todd?
Nothing for me.
Mike?
All set.
Chris?
Nothing, Lydia.
All set.
Terrell?
All set. Okay. All right. Just to remind the board and the parents at home that Friday is an early release day, so we have professional development planned. This is our second session with teachers in regard to teacher evaluation and helping teachers prepare for that mid-year conversation. Those conversations will be scheduled with evaluators, principals, and other department supervisors, starting mid-January until the February break. So these, this early release is preparing teachers for that and giving them some opportunity to go back to their work plan and begin to describe the progress that they've made and the evidence that they'll bring forward to their evaluators.
Great.
Friday, I could announce, early release.
Oh, come back to me, please. We are having, on Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and the Simsbury Group Martin Luther King Committee has gotten together and they have got a great day planned at 1:00 at First Church of Christ, and it's 2:00 at the First Church of Christ. And it's got, there'll be music and reading one of his speeches, and there'll be discussion, and it'll, it's always a great event, and it's always a big turnout, so come early and get a seat, but it's a wonderful thing, and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew about it. 1:00, you said, right? It's 2:00. 2:00.
That's what I was reporting, the RBC.
It's 2:00. I think it's 2:00. It's 2:00 at the First Church of Christ in the... All right. And it's open to the public? Simsbury. It's open to the public, it's free, and it's a great way to celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King on the day off. Second year of doing it this? I think it's the fourth year. Fourth or fifth? Every year it changes up a little bit, which makes it interesting, so it's worth coming every year. Something new. Good. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Two updates for the board this evening. Tomorrow, we'll conclude our first round of lockdown drills using our updated standard response protocol. So we have two additional elementary schools, which will be doing drills tomorrow. They've gone exceedingly well, and they've been a great collaborative effort with the Simsbury Police Department. Together with the Simsbury PD, we've been able to enter every single classroom and give just-in-time direct feedback to both kids and adults around utilizing these protocols for safety, and it's been going really, really well. So I wanted to let you know that. In addition, before the holiday season, the Subcommittee for Communications did have the opportunity to meet. We're taking a look at our cycles of communication to all of our stakeholders in the Simsbury community, and Martha Hogan is helping to kind of draft a document to be able to look at what those communications are and for what purpose we send out those communications, and we'll be looking to assessing any need additionally that's out there for information from our stakeholders. So more to come on that.
And I, just to comment on the safety drills, I've gotten a lot of good feedback on people who've said the children are, children are prepared for it, and they're not alarmed. There seems to be a lot of good feedback that there was great communication out to the classes and the schools, so they knew it was coming, and the kids were kind of ready to make it happen. So I think, I've heard good things. Thank you for all that work. Thank you for that feedback. Thank you, Susan. Burke?
Two items. One relates to the upcoming three-board conversation that the Board of Finance would be hosting on Tuesday, the 21st. I believe that's a 5:00 PM start. And Matt and I have met with town staff, talking about the six-year CIP, and we had a meeting this week with the financial, the bond, the bond council that the firm is, PFM, and that the task and the item that we want to bring forth at the request of the Board of Finance is to, is to show a six-year plan that stays within the 7% guideline. And so essentially, we took the board's last draft that you all had, had asked us to, to bring forward, shared it with, with the town. They have not finished their process, but they, they did some, some rolling forward and worked with PFM, and we're, we're going to see some changes in order to get to that 7%, to stay within that, to some of the projects, pushing some of them out, but it's a, it's an, it's an exercise that they've asked us to do for several years, and we're trying to make sure that we bring that forward. And then we'll be updating you all, those of you who, you know, who don't have the opportunity to come to that meeting, to sort of see what are our next steps. Any other comments on that, Matt?
I would just say the other thing is, I will, you know, similar to tonight, provide the Board of Finance with, you know, a brief presentation on some of the significant budget drivers that we're thinking about at this point in time.
Yeah. Good.
The other area I just wanted to apprise the board about is that we've continued to have cooperation with the town from a standpoint of looking at the areas of technology where we can continue to help each other out, and there's a, a town task force that has been meeting, had a, had a second meeting with them last evening that Jason, Casey, and myself went to. And we looked, looking at areas where, in our CIP, there's some similar capital projects that we're, that we're trying to, to present in sort of a joint fashion, perhaps, and also just keeping an eye to those needs that we have from the operating side as well. So we're going to continue to, to look for those areas to expand cooperation. As you, as you may recall, we have a shared situation where the towns, the town IT staff takes care of the Board of Ed offices in terms of IT, and we help to support their funding. So we've got a long history, and we want to keep expanding that.
So the meeting is on the 21st at 5:00 PM, and I encourage our board to, to attend if possible, because this is really crucial, three-board meetings we have every year as we're going into budget season. So, very good. Is there anything that you want to prepare us for as we go to this meeting?
I think, I think tonight's presentation is kind of a segue to some of that.
That provides the context of the CIP, this will be the background, and any questions you have will help us certainly to prepare for that meeting on the 21st.
All right. Good. All right, we look forward to it. Thank you.
Two items for me, Lydia. One, just want to let you know that we have kind of officially kicked off the principal searches for both Latimer Lane and Central School. We advertised this past weekend, and today Sue and I were over at Latimer Lane School, meeting with the faculty, which is part of the process we do when we have these searches to gather feedback from the staff as to what they see as desirable traits in their next leader, challenges that they feel the school is faced with, and also the strengths they see in their school community. And the information historically has really helped us to provide good background information when we're screening candidates. We will head over and do the same thing with Central tomorrow. And then we also have dates for parent forums. We have an opportunity for parents to come together and discuss similar things with us, and that all goes into the background information that Sue utilizes when we screen candidates and ultimately make decisions. So what's a little different about this process is we have two vacancies, so we're going to run one process rather than have two separate processes where we're juggling candidates back and forth. We feel that that will be the best way to handle this situation and bring forward to the board viable candidates to ultimately for you to make the selection of, you know, two really very important positions for us moving forward. So we're excited about that. The faculty at Latimer was great today in providing feedback, and I know Central will be. The second piece I wanted to share is just a bit of a background story about one of our outstanding students at Simsbury High School. I happened to go to a basketball game a couple weeks ago, it was the Berlin Basketball Game. Our basketball team has received a lot of attention this year. They're, they're ranked seventh in the state, and it's a good opportunity to go see them play. One of our students, JB Hayes, is a junior at Simsbury High School. JB was diagnosed with a brain tumor last year during the season after suffering a head injury and underwent emergency brain surgery. He has recovered, he's back on the court, and what he organized was a fundraiser at the basketball game with Berlin, buckets for brain tumors. And with the goal of hopefully raising, my understanding was initially a few hundred dollars to give to Brain Research Foundation, he raised $5,000. And at the game, JB, before it started, addressed the crowd, talked a little bit about his personalized experience, talked about the support that the school system and, and most importantly, his family gave him throughout this. I mean, it was a tearjerker, it really was, and he did a great job. The other team came out for warm-ups with the T-shirts on that they purchased for the fundraiser, and it was just really a wonderful demonstration of community coming together and a student ultimately taking his experience and trying to do good with it. I mean, so hats off to him and for the community in supporting JB the way they have, and really a neat ending to what was a real difficult challenge in his life. So I wanted to share that with you. Okay.
Good, those are, it's good.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Very, very, very good stories to share about our students. And with that, I'll share another, our, Mallory Barnard could not be here this evening, she's our other student rep, because we, she had knee surgery this past Thursday. So she just emailed me telling me she didn't want to be here, so I want to send her well wishes at a speed.
Absolutely.
Speaking about parent forums, parent meetings, I understand we have one more meeting for Common Core for Parents?
We do, on January 29th, I believe.
Yes.
Is that correct?
I have the 29th. Yes, 29th. And can you speak a little bit about that for those that have not been to any?
Right. We have had a few sessions. We had one at Squadron Line, we had one at Tooten Hills that I attended. Matt was with me with the Squadron Line presentation. And Grace at Latimer Lane, Grace Morris had done hers back in the fall. And so this is a combination of Terrifil and Central School, and both principals will present on the Common Core and then have it open for questions for parents and to give them some historical background, to give them some information about the work that we're currently doing in district and how it impacts students as well. And topic of the Smarter Balanced Assessment has come up at all of the sessions we've been at, and we'll address that as well.
Where is it being held?
You know, I'm just looking to see. I have TBD, so I don't know. It's definitely the 29th, because initially it was the 22nd. So that's why I wanted to double-check the date as well. I have the 29th.
I have the 29th. It'll be on our website, though.
It'll be on the website.
So this is open to all?
I'm assuming it would be about 7:00 at that, but I don't know the location. Central or Terrifil.
So it'll be open to all parents that did not attend others?
And it's gone out on their newsletters as well, that they're promoting it for anybody that was not able to attend either Squadron and/or Tooten or Latimer, they're able to attend as well.
Do we have any community members that are considered attending? Have they attended at all? Is this open to community?
You know, I wouldn't, I didn't know from my, you know...
They haven't identified themselves.
They didn't identify themselves, so that was curious.
I wouldn't know that.
Another piece, Lydia, is Erin is going to film a TV segment with SCTV on the Common Core on the Smarter Balanced Assessment, and Scott Baker is going to join her as well as a teacher, so we're going to try to get multiple perspectives and give Dominique an opportunity to ask questions, you know, from kind of a citizen point of view, and we can certainly, you know, that's live, you can get that, we can put a link to our website, and we can, in a letter that I send out, we can let parents know that that will be out there as a resource as well. So I think we're getting there on multiple fronts.
Good. What are you taping?
The end of January.
The beginning of February. Timing will be good for February showing. Very good. And the final thing I have is save the date. As you know, we're starting up again at the Legislature, so we have the Legislative Breakfast sponsored by Kraken Cave. It is on Thursday, February 13th at 8:00 AM at the State Capitol, the LOB. And this is really an important breakfast for all the districts that are in the Hartford area. The superintendents will be there and board members. The date is February 13th at 8:00 AM at the LOB. And this is the first time that we will be having, you know, opening session, having legislative breakfast. All our legislators will be in attendance, and it's, it's important that board members, you know, do come and do express any concerns or any questions that they have as we move into, as you know, it's a short session, so we're on the second year this year, but again, there will be some areas that, you know, Ed Committee and the Legislature will be looking at as we move into, you know, the Common Core, which we are implementing.
Evaluation as well.
Evaluation and other areas. So I encourage you to attend, and, you know, if you have anything. It is a short breakfast, it's about an hour, hour and a half, but it is, is important that, that you do attend. So, and our legislators will be here also, they will give, you know, send invitations. All right, that's it for any of the dates. We will move on to recommend...
Lydia?
Yes.
Matt, can I ask you, we had that, last week we had that kickoff meeting for the strategic plan?
Yes.
Could you just, a minute?
Sure.
I'm expecting you to kind of give that a highlight.
Yep, sorry about that. Last week, we got together and, and as Tom said, we kicked off our strategic planning process of bringing our Board of Ed together with our administrative council with the goal to revise our mission and our vision, as well as define the next five-year cycle of Board of Education goals. So I feel like we had a really productive three-hour session. We're taking that information back, we're going to synthesize it, and then we will be in contact with the board on, as well as our administrative council on next steps in refinement. So, you know, we will culminate into the spring with a new series of goals, five-year goals, and what we call improvement indicators, those kind of high-leverage areas where we need to really focus our resources and energies for the betterment of the district, so.
You know, I just wanted to say, I thought it was a really well-run couple hours, you know, I really thought it was a well-run meeting, and I wanted to thank the team for putting the time and energy behind making that, you know, good use of our time. I also thought it was really good to get to, to interact with each one of the principals and, you know, that we don't get to speak with that often. I thought it was really good from that perspective as well.
Great.
Any other comments for those that were in attendance? I know most of us were there. New thoughts?
I echo what Tom had said, just that it was very, it was, it was a very productive meeting, which was great. Sometimes those, you know, you can get off task, but it was a really well-run meeting.
Interesting to hear different perspectives from the different, different types of administrators, different departments. So it was nice it came together to what it was.
Chris? Terrell, you were also?
Yeah, I thought it was great, and again, it is interesting, the perspective of the elementary teachers and the high school and the special ed, and you got all these people who, it's a very diverse group that you work with. The education is a very, it's not a very easy thing to understand, and being part of it and watching it work is very cool. And I think we're very lucky here in Simsbury to have what we have, working together.
I echo the sentiments. We were in the same group, so it was really actually nice having, you know, a fellow board member, also with, you know, different administrators in central office within the groups, and, you know, really gave us some, some thoughts to think about. In particular, case studies, I thought, with the three different school districts, that the DMC was using, and it was nice to be able to, to see where we stand and, you know, what their strategic plan is, is all of that, so. So we'll be good, we'll look forward to the next steps.
Next steps, sure.
Great, great, very good. And DMC was pleased with, with our...
Absolutely.
Good, that's important, so. They've always done good work for us. Great. All right, we are now on to recommended actions. Exhibit one in your packet online, for those in the audience in the packet. Approval of minutes of December 10th meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We are now on to exhibit two, acceptance of donation from the Culture and Enrichment Committee. All right.
So this is going to become a, a regular event, and this is the second time that we've done this format, because now that the cultural programming is, is actually now held in a separate fund, the PTO donation will go to the Cultural Enrichment Committee, and then they in turn send their, their check to us, which is what pays for the great programming that they bring into all of our K-6 schools. So we're asking you to accept this generous donation from all five PTOs totaling $7,396.71.
We've done this in the past.
This is the second time, and this will become a regular thing now, because this is how essentially each, each, each time that they want to do a new round of programming, there's, there's got to be a donation that coincides.
The way the Cultural Enrichment Program works is that you've got different, you've got volunteers from each PTO that meet together. It's the only organization, it's the only committee, subcommittee that has every school represented. And so they bring cultural events into the schools three times a year usually, and they have a fund that comes out of the PTO dues that they've been for years, I mean, for, forever and ever. But because of the nonprofit issue and the nonprofit status, not one of the schools has them as their, part of their school PTO. So what has happened is the umbrella of the Board of Ed is being able to figure out how to use a community subgroup, and so that's why we have to do it this way now. So that's the shift. It's, it's been in existence for years, it's worked for years, the money has gone the same way every year, and it's always been balanced budget and has had great control, but this is the way it's going to work now, and Burke's going to help us with it, so that's why it has to be done this way.
Another question. How much is requested from each PTO? Do you have a total of...
It's per student.
Oh, per student, okay.
And it's like $2 per student, or $1 per student or something. It says very small.
That's how big, I was just curious how you came to $7,000.
Every student who, it comes from the dues, each person who paid their dues, a couple dollars of the dues goes to the Cultural Enrichment Fund. I'm sorry, am I, I was, I was on the committee for a while.
Good. I just need a little clarification.
Sorry.
Very good. All right, do you hear, do you hear a motion?
So move.
Second?
Aye, me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Any abstentions? No abstentions. Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to exhibit three, acceptance of gift from Friends of Simsbury Hockey.
This is a, a pretty much annual event from the Friends of Simsbury Hockey, and wanted to acknowledge their generous donation of $7,500 to help maintain girls' and boys' hockey programs and hope that you'll support this donation.
Good.
So move.
Motion, do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Thank you for that generous gift from, from Friends of Hockey. You're now on to acceptance of gift from Ensign Bickford. Exhibit four in your packet.
We have continued to have corporate support for our first robotics program at Simsbury High School, and this year, again, the Ensign Bickford Foundation is giving a gift in the amount of $2,500, so we're asking not only to accept this gift, but also we've continued to receive grant funding from United Tech technologies as a corporate sponsor, so we're asking for acceptance of these two gifts totaling $7,500.
Good. Do you hear a motion?
Motion.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
It's very nice of them to do.
Yeah.
Yes, very, very good. And I also would echo, if you have not had a chance to see the first robotics in action, I think they have a few of their upcoming events. I know at Center Center and a few others, they, they are really...
Getting ready.
They have one, so they have a few new students.
They had an event?
To see that, for robotics.
Future engineers, right?
Absolutely.
It's all good.
They're small, and they've also obtained honors and notoriety through their work, so they are definitely worth seeing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Thank you. We are now on to exhibit five, information reports, the budget overview for the 2014-2015 year.
All right.
All right.
Okay, so this is kind of our official kickoff to the public discussion and the Board of Education discussion about our budget for the upcoming year. So in terms of process, we've gone through pretty detailed individual meetings with each of our administrators, gathered that information, had ongoing discussions with them about priorities and resource alignment in kind of the local context and, and what we're faced with, and come before you tonight basically with a pretty brief overview of two main things, some contextual factors, as well as some of the main drivers in what will be the Board of Ed budget. And our hope here is that it will stimulate some conversation, and we're prepared at the next board meeting on the 28th to come back with a, a whole nother layer of detail relative to staffing, relative to technology, and some of the other things that are in here. But we, feel free to stop me at any point in this, and ask questions, it's set up kind of in that format, and, you know, I'll just go through and we can kind of see how it goes through there. Okay? So the two main pieces, as I said, I wanted to talk about are, are overall contextual factors, as well as the main, main drivers. So as we planned with the group this year, where last year we talked quite a bit about preparing ourselves and responding responsibly to some of the reform, we're really thinking this year that in terms of the work we're doing with our vision, our core beliefs, our, our goal-setting, we need to make sure that we're building a budget that really supports those things for the school system as we move forward. And we also need to understand that we're in a time of pretty incredible change in education, and when I think about budget planning, I mean, we have local contextual change here that we're faced with from an economic standpoint. We definitely have, you know, a dynamic enrollment change that we've been discussing, and we are in the face of the largest educational reform that any of us have seen in our careers. And I don't want to lose sight of that, as this is really year one of that implementation, although we talked about it last year, we're still just starting that process. So when I think about setting the school district up for success, that second point there of managing change effectively, we've talked about that here at the board, I really see my role as trying to create the conditions for my leadership team and for our teachers so they can sustain success in these times. And I think there's a lot of elements of change management that we need to be cognizant of as we put our budget together and present it to the public as we move into the spring. This next visual is one that we worked with last year, that I think is, is a nice way to kind of kick off our conversation with the reality that we're faced with certain pressures, pressures that drive our costs down, and pressures that provide, you know, an upward trend to us. And I just wanted to bring to light some of those again tonight, because they're, they're very much at the forefront of our planning process and driving what we'll be presenting to you. So certainly our enrollment, we've talked quite a bit about enrollment over the past couple of years. I have some specifics to share again this evening. The overall Connecticut economic climate, as we try to crawl out of really difficult economic times here in the last five years or so. And the local climate, we know what we're being faced with in terms of taxation and some of the challenges that are there and being discussed, as well as some of the future of business in town, and what those realities will mean to taxpayers in upcoming years. Also, discussion early on, we met with the Board of Finance, that we will probably ask to put together various different budget increase scenarios for us to be really thoughtful[1676.62] increase scenarios for us to be really thoughtful about, and need to be cognizant of that and what that would look like when we begin to talk about programs and resources, which is really vital to us as a school district. When we think about things that are driving, you know, cost up, our insurance and pension obligations, we know that we've talked over the course of the past several years, that's an area of our budget that continues to grow. I think we've done some really proactive things that we'll get into on a more detailed level later on to help to control those costs. Innovation and technology, we know that we want to continue to address technology to support instruction, to support curriculum, and to support assessment. Responsiveness to special education needs, this board supported last year some structural changes in the funding for those in special education that I think has put us in a better position than we were in the past in terms of leadership and kind of aligning resources to help improve communication. This budget will have another layer of resources I feel we need to allocate to special education. Quite honestly, not only to meet unexpected needs that we're being faced with right now, but to plan thoughtfully into the future. Again, the educational reform in the mandates, and I put in there as well school security, that's more on the capital side, but that's something that we continue to wrestle with and think about and be very thoughtful about as we plan moving forward. Next couple of slides are really that context I talked about. You can see from 2006, '07, a budget increase of 6.2 into where we've been over the course of the last five years or so, in terms of what I would say have been extremely responsible budgets put forward by the Board of Education that quite honestly have allowed us, as I'll talk about a little bit later on, to be innovative in certain ways and to support programming. But by no, you know, no level of real conversation do I want people to think that the 1.5 has been in excess of spending comparable to other places in the state of Connecticut. So I wanted to bring that forward a little bit. I had some fun with this. I went back on Dave Holden's historical sheet that we'll hand out, you know, next week as we start to supply budget material. But it's, you know, and I know you can't compare era to era in terms of what's going on, but I think it does give us a historical perspective on where budget increases from an average standpoint have been across decades leading up to now. And you can see the trend. I don't need to read it to you, but the last five-year average has been about a 1.5% increase, which again, I think in lieu of other activity in the state, has been extremely responsible. The next slide really brings that to bear in terms of data we collected last year. And we'll do this again this year. It's too early on in the process, as superintendents are just presenting their initial budgets across the state. But this was a snapshot taken towards the time when we went to referendum last year of budgets that were out there in surrounding districts. And what it demonstrates was that our 1.89% increase that we were asking support from was in the bottom, you know, 20% of budgets put forward in the state of Connecticut. So again, another snapshot just to provide some context of where our Simsbury budgets have sat over the course of the past several years. You know, we talk a lot about return on investment. That's something I will speak in much more detail to when I formally present the budget to you. But this is just demonstrating the general context of how our budget is set amongst, you know, peer towns. Enrollment, we've touched on enrollment quite frequently. I know Sue did a detailed enrollment report early on in the year. We certainly have ongoing work. We're going to be meeting at the end of the month with our Facilities and Enrollment Task Force to continue our conversation about modular space removal as an attempt to right-size our buildings with where our enrollment is. But you can see a significant decline in our student enrollment from '08, '09 of 4,900 students to this year, our 10-1 enrollment of a little over 4,300 students, a decline of, you know, 578 students or close to 12%. We are projected to decline again, about 77 students, which is a much smaller decline than we've seen in recent years, but still in that decline mode. And we watch that across certain levels. We know that the majority of that decline over the past, you know, six to seven years has occurred certainly at the elementary level. We're now at the point where that decline bubble, smaller cohorts are moving up to Henry James, and we're starting to see enrollment move down at Simsbury High School. Not dramatically, but we're starting to see that occur, and that bubble will continue to move forward. Enrollment at the elementary level is projected to even out in a five-year period or so, but of course, our enrollment will continue to go down as those cohorts, smaller cohorts make their way up through the high school. Something we also wanted to demonstrate is while enrollment has decreased, so has the size of our organization, and I think that's important to note. I know that we talk quite a bit as a board, and I did my presentations, as one of our key responsibilities upfront in the budget planning process needs to be, what are the responsible reductions of staff we can take as we become smaller as an organization? And I see that as a responsibility we need to, we need to carry forward in an effort to mitigate increases in the budget. And I also see those reductions as not impacting program in a negative way. So I want to make sure as we move through our planning process, we decipher those two things, you know, reductions that are enrollment-related, as opposed to any other reductions that would involve discussions on program or resources in a way that I think would negatively impact the district. So close to 50 full-time positions and 7% of our staff since the '08, '09 year. So pretty significant reductions in staff. You can see a slight pickup there in the '12, '13 school year. That was the implementation of full-day kindergarten. And then you can see last year where we did have a net reduction of overall FTE, even though we were able to reallocate and do some good things and move forward thoughtfully in our budget. The next piece really goes to that thought of how we have planned thoughtfully and taken advantage of the opportunity to reallocate some of our resources. And I think it's important that we continue to think that way as we move forward in our planning process. So these are some of the things that this board has supported and superintendents, both Diane and myself last year, have put forward. And when I talk about managing change effectively, I feel that our organization is, you know, I put the phrase up there, poised to respond to our systemic needs. We're in a pretty good place to respond to reform the way we are currently wired. Is it perfect? No. Have we put some things in place that are extremely helpful to our students and to our teachers over the course of the past three to five years? We absolutely have. So some of those things are the reading intervention program at the elementary level. We certainly have increased access to technology, and we want to continue to do that. Full-day kindergarten, we talked quite a bit about our learning clusters at Simsbury High School last year, as opportunities that separate the programs at Simsbury High School from other programs. And those increased elective opportunities are extremely important for us to think about, and the value of those opportunities as we move forward in our budget planning process. I spoke briefly about the special ed structures. So, you know, this was just an attempt to demonstrate that while our budget increases have not been significantly high, we found a way to reallocate and be creative and innovative at the same time to better the overall positioning of our school system. And I think that's an important thing we need to continue to think about. So when we think about the drivers or the big pieces of the budget for our planning purposes, in our goal setting and what we're trying to accomplish, we certainly think about reduction of classroom FTE as it relates to our overall enrollment decline. In the same sentence as that, we want to make sure we're staffing within our Board of Education guidelines because we know that that has strong community value. We know that that has set the track record of setting us up for success. We need to, I think, be more cognizant of that than ever before with the new demands that are on teachers, with the Common Core, with assessment, with the realization that they now do so much data collection, so much analysis. And we want our teachers connecting with kids. So we want our classroom ranges and our sizes in the appropriate ranges that our Board of Education has supported. Increased access to technology for students and teachers, I'll talk about that a little bit more later on. We've seen some pretty significant increased special education costs as a result of outplacement this year, and I think we need to talk about that a little bit as a board, and talk about how we're not only going to address that in the current year, but how we're going to address that moving forward in the budget planning process, as well as some other ideas I have about adequate resources required for special education. Our insurance and pension obligations are certainly always a large driver, and our new contractual obligations being the largest single driver every year in our contract. So those are the main pieces to work through tonight in kind of a broad brush. When we put some numbers to those drivers, and at this point in time, some of the financial knowns, if you think about the size of our organization right now, and this is how we start our initial budget process, and we take our kind of fixed costs, our contractual obligations, and our estimate for pension and insurance contributions for next year, and we roll that forward with the current number of employees that we have, that would lead to an overall increase in our budget of a little above 3%. So that's kind of the straight rollover with the pieces we have right now. Our contracts are negotiated, so we have a good firm handle on that. You can see the biggest driver, certainly, it makes sense. We talked about before the teacher, new teacher contract, which is about a million-dollar increase overall. And that leads to about an increase overall in the budget of $2 million. Then we start thinking about offsets, or things that are in place that we can take advantage of to lower that cost that we have in place right now. We take a look back at the average number of retirements over the course of five to 10 years. We select the number eight as that average, and we think about, okay, if we replace those positions, what's the differential in reality between a teacher at the top of the scale going out into retirement and an average of a mid-level teacher that we hire? And we can realize some savings there, some mitigation of costs. You see about $200,000 there. The other two items you see are what I would call those responsible reductions of FTE as our enrollment goes down. We've talked about enrollment quite frequently at this board, and we know that you can't necessarily equate a decline in 100 students to X number of teachers, you know, particularly at the elementary level where we have five schools, schools of different size, and things roll differently. Sometimes you're able to capture more with a smaller number, other times you're not. This year, reality is we're projected to go down 77 students, but when you roll those numbers forward and plan thoughtfully, we're also able to capture quite a bit of FTE and stay within class-size guidelines. So at this point in time, we see we'd be able to reduce five elementary classroom positions and seven sections, or FTE is what we call them, we wouldn't call them sections, seven FTE at the secondary level, between the middle level and between the high school level. And certainly, that picture comes into clarity a little bit more as we do class registration and we see enrollment numbers. But we feel pretty comfortable with that number overall, and that is a little bit over a million-dollar offset to that initial rollover. So when people ask the question, they get asked pretty frequently, of, hey, your numbers are going down, why is your budget not going down? When you actually look at the largest drivers, at least for planning purposes this year, the largest driver of teacher contract going up a million, and we're offsetting that by close to a million going down and offset. So I think when I talk about responsible planning and controlling costs without impacting program is the place to start, I wanted to show that kind of in this figure in terms of how those drivers play out for us.
Now, this is really, you know, really good page from my perspective. It does show the thoughtful process you guys have gone through over the last couple of years. Well, I remember seeing this a couple times.
This also has the kind of the baseline assumed is that kind of the current plan that we're running, kind of current plan to actual is almost right on. Matt, so this basically says, hey, right now, this is basically our starting point, there's like no variance, kind of implicit in all of this analysis as well, right?
Correct.
So, and that's kind of what's happening? That's what's happening right now? There's really no big variance, is either to the good or to the bad?
Well...
Or our current budget is like...
We have some current budget challenges with special ed, which we'll talk a little bit more about in this process, more specifically at our next board meeting with our quarterly report. Overall, when you look at the macro sense, Tom, we're not, you know, in variance to any great degree compared to where we have been in past years. But that one particular area, due to some factors I'd like to talk about, is in variance. When I just take it, and I'm just breaking out basically what we just talked about a little bit more, so I don't need to spend too much time on this. But overall, just kind of the right sizing and the staffing reductions of 12 certified positions, certainly. In the perfect world, we hope that we offset this with retirements, right? Because we certainly know we've gone out and hired some great young teachers, so that would be our hope. That's not always the case, but, you know, we still need to recognize that we want to staff within those guidelines, and that's an important framework for us to stay consistent with. So when you take that and you roll it out to show a little bit of the support of what that looks like from class size, and again, when we present the budget later on, we'll break this down by school, so you can see actually what it looks like school by school. But when you roll these new numbers over, our average K2 size, where we have a board policy that states the appropriate range is 18 to 22, we have a class size average of 20.2, I think in a really good workable spot. When you look at our three through six, where our guideline's a little higher of 21 to 25, we actually have a class size average of 21. Now, the reductions I've taken, what I'm calling responsible reductions of FTE, are actually the maximum number I can take without going over class-size guidelines. So, you know, I just want people to recognize that upfront. We're being transparent with where our enrollment is. We feel this is the responsible number of sections we can take without going over guideline. And if we need to look for other places for savings, I want to be upfront and say I'd like to look for other places other than classroom teachers, because that would put us in a different position that I think would start to impact program pretty negatively. You can see the seventh and eighth grade, class size is a little bit bigger in eighth grade, still within the guideline, but within a year, we've been in a very manageable place. And what this will allow us to do is reduce the partial teams and actually have three teams and three teams at both grade levels. And from a staffing standpoint, it actually in the long run will start to clean things up a little bit relative to split staff across buildings. So the reductions certainly at Henry James over the course of the past years have not been as pronounced as they have at the elementary level or the high school level because of the teaming structure. But the realization is when it's time to take FTE from that level, you can take a larger amount because you're right sizing the team, and it comes off of each kind of content area. We'll get definitely into more detail on what that looks like at our next board meeting when we go through some of the staffing and enrollment information in greater detail. But just wanted to show you that those reductions pan out and really don't impact us in a negative way. The other piece, and I want to give, you know, Burke and his staff some kudos, I've really pushed on, this year I feel it's important that we recognize other areas we can start to look at in our operating budget, that we can find operational efficiencies as we get smaller or we have less students to serve. So we've really started to take a detailed look at the following areas, the transportation, utilities, instructional supplies, and equipment. And the philosophy or the rationale is simple, right? Less kids, you should have less things. But they're really the fine grain of detail to go into to make sure that, again, we don't impact things negatively in our initial proposal is important to our team. So we actually feel we can realize savings in these areas in our initial kind of outlook and proposal and still maintain the quality of services and resources that people need. Transportation, we would plan on eliminating two school buses from our current runs. We're transporting close to 600 students less than we have seven years ago with the same number of buses. So with the software capabilities we have now, and with our staff, we're really taking a hard look and been told already that I think we can reduce two buses with minimal to no, no impact on the customer service or what we're doing there moving forward. So the utilities is really an extension of that modular removal project that we will realize, I mean, it's a limited savings amount of $50,000, but I think it adds up, as you can see, to these different areas of a quarter million dollars, which is pretty...
A little bit health.
Yeah, pretty substantial, you know?
It counts.
It takes, you know, 0.35 of a percent in totality off of what any initial proposal would be. So these are areas we wanted to be upfront, talk to you about. We've already talked to our administrative council about. We're going to engage in an exercise with the equipment requests, and really even beyond this, prioritize of what are really must-haves, what are nice-to-haves, and what else do we need to think about if we have to find other areas to make reductions or to, you know, demonstrate different scenarios or what we have to do. So a great deal of legwork has been done by Burke and his staff in terms of, you know, different areas, be it special ed, be it utilities, where we're looking at things in a much more programmatic way, in a much more isolated, single, you know, function way, allowing us to really get a better handle on the actual cost of things. It is early on in the process, so there still are unknowns we need to consider and think about. Insurance and pension probably being the two largest unknowns. You know, we'll continue to monitor the information we get from Bob Lindberg in his office. Burke is, you know, in constant communication with him, and that picture usually becomes much more clear in February timeframe. And that's an area where you hope to maybe be able to realize a little more savings, but I don't feel comfortable at this point hedging a bet on that and projecting that it's going to be somewhere and then have to come back and move that number in the reverse direction. ECS, there has not been a lot of conversation on the education cost share grant. It has been quiet, but that's something that Board of Finance asks about on an annual basis. We need to be cognizant of, and we'll continue to monitor to hear if there's any changes there. That overall number, I think, is in excess of 5 million?
5 million.
Yeah.
If I could ask a question on the OPEB?
Yeah.
Which I saw earlier, you have in the budget for $560,000, and I know that that's, it's undetermined, but it also swings pretty widely through the budget process. What's the range that you think that that could be?
Range of increase?
Yeah. I mean, we're putting 560 in right now, but it's an unknown right now.
Well, 560 is the health insurance increase and the OPEB together.
And the OPEB together, okay.
Right.
So... The range on that, I would say, is probably, you know, we would expect to be less than 100,000 would be the outside number. But they're, both OPEB and pension are determined with the help of the actuarial firm and looking at, looking at the returns that they expect on these investment portfolios. And as you recall, the interest rate for pensions was assumed to be, you know, going down to be more conservative in that regard, and the rate of return for the OPEB is slightly... down, to be more conservative in that regard, and the rate of return for the OPEB is slightly different, but those are the two, you know, the two that we have an annual required contribution, so we're not making up that number, we're being told this is, you know, this is what that number is.
The insurance premium can swing a little bit larger.
Insurance premium is the, is really the typically the one that, you know, that would swing the most. And then this year, with our collective bargaining, with adding a new plan for certain groups, where our largest group are teachers, and also looking at some of the plan design changes or adding moving parts, meeting regularly, and again this week with Tom Cook from town of Simsbury to look at carrier consolidation, and that was something that we've had Lindberg and Ripple look at the market, and they've gone out, this is, I think, the third or fourth time in the last several, last five years, so we're looking seriously at the cost savings there and trying to make that all happen by July 1st.
Thanks.
The pension contribution, though, I think Rick, Chris raised a good point, Mike and I are on that committee, and, you know, the assumption is still, I think, seven and a half percent is the assumed return.
No.
Seven and three quarters?
Six and three quarters for pension.
The long-term rate of return was six and three quarters?
It was a pretty, it was a pretty good reduction. We didn't touch the OPEB.
I didn't think it went down that low, but anyway, the point is, on a long-term basis, can you even sustain that in the low-interest rate environment that we're in? And the longer the low-interest rate environment continues, the harder it is to make the case that that number will stay there. So, it's something that we got to keep an eye on.
The next piece I wanted to talk about in our planning process and reviewing where we are right now and thinking about moving forward to next year, how we respond to what we're calling educational and organizational needs. So, this tonight is really kind of in a macro sense, with the thought that we would come back, we'd hear questions after this, we would come back at the next board meeting with more detailed presentations on basically all the information that's up on the board, but this would be kind of the reallocation, or the new piece of what we feel we need to be responsive with within the organization right now. The top bullet is technology equipment and staffing related to technology. So last year, we talked about increase of the line item in technology to move forward. What we're saying is increased access for curriculum and instruction as well as assessment. We are going to be faced with this year, a pilot program for the Smarter Balance test that is done online with every student. It's a monumental effort, it's an effort that many districts are grappling and struggling with the best way to monitor, to implement. We know we need to increase access to the technology to do that effectively, so that's one piece of it. The other piece of it is, instruction is changing rapidly, and how do we want to provide the tools for our students during the school day, and for our teachers during the school day, to be at the cutting edge of instruction? So that's something we want to be thoughtful about, and we would be asking for an increase in that line item of $200,000, and that would include both the purchase of new technology, but also the fact that we enroll these devices and our technological side of the organization expands, so does the need to fix things, respond to issues, technical issues, planning issues. So, that proposal, in addition to hardware, would have a tech position in there, which is about a $50,000, $45,000 to $50,000 position as a support person for Jason and his team. And we've had some responsiveness issues this year, as teachers have put in requests to get technology fixed, pretty routine requests, we've been unable to get to those as quickly as we have in the past, and I think we need to, you know, this is a perfect example of how the organization changes and what resources do you need to support that organizational change, and we certainly feel we need to respond to some of those needs on the technology front. Ready, Set, Go program coordinator, Helen Donahue, talked about this in her presentation a few weeks ago. Ready, Set, Go, of course, is our autistic program, it's a K6 program, and what we're talking about is providing some oversight to that program. It's oversight that we used to have in district, we made an adjustment three or four years ago. I feel that it's important that we put some oversight back into this program, it's a program that is growing, it's a program at the elementary level that we've seen a 25% increase in since 10-1 of this year. We're not staffed adequately to respond to that right now, and it's a quality program, it's a program that I believe this board will, you know, has been extremely supportive of in the past, and we want that same quality for our students and supports for our teachers to maintain that. The reality is, if we do not support these students in a really proactive and beneficial way to everything, we end up with increased out placements, and I think that is what we are honestly seeing for the first time, is we've seen a spike in outplacement costs for students, and we have outplaced some elementary school students that formerly we had been able to successfully service in this program. And I think we can successfully service those programs, but we need to take a look at our resource allocation and the leadership in that program as well. When I talk about leadership, it's really the conduit to help families as their kids transition grade level to grade level, and then from elementary school to middle school to high school, and even beyond in the transitional program. So this would be a position that would have oversight from preschool straight through our University of Hartford program in terms of providing consistency and a level of service for our students, for our families, and for our teachers. You know, a go-to person that's an expert in the field of autism is something that I think we need to really strongly consider in this budget.
Did you just question, you saw, we saw a 21% increase in September?
25% increase in the Ready, Set, Go elementary program since 10-1, which is when we do our official enrollment. In fact, the largest increase has been in our preschool program with three-year-olds, where we-
These are kids who are new to us, that we didn't know were coming?
Absolutely, these are move-in students that have come to us since the initial start of the school year. So these, you know, there's no way to, really adequately, I want to say, with the level of service that these students require to budget for that. So what we do is look within resources, we've had to add some resources, some support resources, certainly for these students, they're IEP mandated, they've proven to be successful when we have them in place, and, you know, we'll talk later on at a subsequent meeting about, you know, this is the, kind of the variance time you had asked about, you know, that creates a variance that you need to look in other places in your budget and make adjustments, which we'll do, but it's certainly put a strain on us this year, and we need to be real thoughtful about this in the budget planning process so that next year we don't find ourselves in the same situation.
I don't know if this is the time, the coordinator, you kind of gave an overview, is this person, is it one person you're looking for that would-
One person, this is the position that many of you will probably-
It seems like a huge position from what you described, that's why I'm asking.
Well, many of you will probably remember Janet Haley. Janet Haley was in our district, and Janet helped to kind of build the Ready, Set, Go program from its inception, so Janet had oversight of the program, and what this position provides is a go-to person, a conduit of communication for teachers, for parents. I mean, we're talking about involve students, where there's a lot of information given back and forth, a lot of strategies, a lot of behavioral modifications, it's time intensive. I think it's very doable because it's an oversight position, I mean, we have teaching staff, experts in place, feet on the ground, doing the work, but this is more of a vision, support, budgeting, looking at alternative staffing models.
Specialized skill sets.
Specialized skill sets, absolutely, from a behavioral standpoint more than anything else, so.
And she, or should I say she, this person would then maybe deal with everybody moving up to Henry James as am I?
Absolutely, and I share this openly, some of, you know, when I have conversations with our parents about challenges that they see, particularly within special ed, much, a lot of those conversations are around transitions, you know, things that worked effectively at one point in time, that a new model is a little different as we go up, and how do we balance trying to foster that independence for our students, yet still provide them the support that they need, is a challenge. And, you know, I think you need somebody that has, to Tom's point, that specialized skill set, but it's been a conduit all the way through. So, manages that program, and the reality is, basically, all other programs within our district have a coordinator or a department head of some sort.
Right.
Except this one, and this is a pretty high profile-
And we did have it, I mean, we did have it, that's the other piece of this. I mean, when our program was working so successfully, we had this person in place, and we have since seen that removing that person is not effective, has diminished the effectiveness of the course.
So for me, the words department head kind of put a finer point on what this would really be like rather than coordinator, I just feel like-
Sure.
That makes more sense to me.
Yep.
Yep, thank you.
You got it. You know, we've talked around it a little bit, but resources to support some of the new Ready, Set, Go students-
Current year?
That we've had to provide. So now we need to budget for moving forward, those are students that are going to stay with us, and when they come to us, you know, extremely young, three years old, those are often students that require a paraprofessional to provide the supports throughout the school day. Out-of-district tuition, we've seen an increase in the out-of-district tuitions this year, five new out-of-district placements, so we need to find a way to adequately budget for that moving forward. Our hope, of course, is that this all works kind of together to create a collectively stronger program and we keep more of our students in-house, where we know we've had success with them before. So, really, a lot of these kind of proposals work together in strengthening our own program in hopes of lowering some of the costs that we have to fund right now to provide adequate level of resources.
Question.
Sure.
You've had five this year, what?
An increase of five, so we have a total of 22.
22, so, right.
So, which, you know, comparably to other districts is not an enormous number, but it's a pretty significant increase for us, so that's the reality that we-
Five is a percentage of 20, I mean, that's a, that's a big, that's a big commitment.
And we budget, the way we budget for that, as you know, is net of the excess cost, excess cost grant, so that's the budget line item that we put in place, so when we go beyond that, we don't have a mechanism to adequately adjust to that, so what we do is we look to some of our grant options, you know, including our IDA, special ed grant, which is a two-year grant, and kind of look at that carryover number, and there's some things we can do there hopefully to make some adjustments. But this is really going to require, you know, when I talk about this tonight, I'm almost talking about current year a little bit, as well as thoughtfully planning forward, because we need to address both, both these issues. Any other questions on that front, on these bullets? I know that's a lot of information.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of years ago, we talked as a board, right, about the burden of proof, and we changed that dynamic around. Do you guys remember that? Right? Has any, has any of that kind of come to surface as we struggle with providing services and whatnot? Has any of that kind of fed back on us in any way, shape, or form?
I haven't had that specific conversation with Helen, I know that's very much still in the conversation when people talk legislatively, that Connecticut's one of the few states where the burden of proof is on the school district.
Yeah.
You know, the way I look at that is we've always tried to, you know, problem solve the best we can in terms of a team approach. You know, I think there's a reality to that with the increased level of diagnosis of students with autism, there's new options for schooling and new recommendations from professionals that parents seek opinions from about the level of services and the type of schools that might benefit their child the most, that bring more of these outside placements into conversation, you know? So, you know, to me, it's, we've had an extremely successful program, we need to think about what we want that program looking like, because it's one of two options, right? It's either we service more effectively here, or we pay for-
Somebody else.
Somebody else. So, it's not, to me, a matter of holding a hard line or having a hard conversation about staffing, it's the best, what's the best program you can build to meet the needs of your kids? Can you sustain that programming? And what other options are out there for students at what cost? Because the funding mechanism for excess costs certainly isn't 100% of four and a half times, and that's another, you know, budgetary factor we have to consider. We don't know exactly what that number's going to be yet this year. So, normally it's around 80%, Burke, is what it's been the past, 75 to 80?
75 to 80 on average, and that payment typically, the first payment comes in February, so it's giving you reimbursement in the current year, we then show that as a separate grant, and then we pay out of that. So, we have been in contact with the state, they're structuring the payments a little bit differently, I'm told they're going to actually give us, I believe, one larger payment first, and there won't be as much in the supplemental. In the month of March, then, there's a sort of a second half where they verify what the costs are in the second half of the year, and then ultimately we get a total reimbursement. You lose two separate payments.
What I'd like to do at our next meeting, Burke and I have started to put the information together, is kind of show you a historical of, kind of a program-based budget look at special education, what those costs have looked like over a five-year period. It's one of the areas in our district where we've really kind of held the cost, and when we went through the kind of exercise and improvement efforts with District Management Council, made a pretty significant reduction, you know, to those, to those level of services, and I think now we have to kind of find what's the right level in these particular programs, because this isn't all of special education, this is one piece that we've seen a need for increased level of services, really based to two factors, out placements and new move-ins. So, something that we'll certainly have more information on, and if you can think of more questions there, like us, in different ways to present, but, you know, we've taken a good look at about five years of expenditures on that side from a program standpoint, and it runs from about 12 million consistently for a few years down to 11-point-something, and then with these incurred costs, up towards 13 million. The reality of an outplacement cost at some of these higher-cost facilities really, you know, means to the operating budget about $65,000. You know, you're going to, you're going to have to budget for that four-and-a-half times number. So that's kind of how we look at, so you think about, you know, five students unanticipated, and there's the dollar value, you know, 400, $500,000 right there of additional costs that are not, you know, you know, when we think about costs and programs and effectiveness, that's not related to your overall enrollment decline, right? I mean, that's a factor that kind of lays outside of that, so, I mean, it's something to consider and something I know we all want to be thoughtful about as we move forward.
And what you talked about the last five years, the burden of proof, to answer your question, has been, it will come up again, it's scheduled to come up again this year in the legislature, it comes up every year with Ed Committee, and it, we're one of seven states still that have not, you know, passed that, so it's scheduled to come up again, and this has been going on for years with the burden of proof in Connecticut. So, that's where we are with that again.
So to put a dollar figure to the overall bullets we have here, it's about $750,000, so it's pretty significant, which is, you know, overall value, just to put a percentage to it, about a 1.5, a little over 1%, 1.1, 1.2%. So, what I normally do with this presentation is provide a range because of the factors that are still in play. Chris, you mentioned one of the large ones, which is the insurance, and some of the other things we're still taking, taking looks at, but a preliminary budget range of 1.5 to 2.2% as we start kind of working through our refinement process is the number I just wanted to put out there today for conversation and for thought as we get ready for our next series of presentations to not only the Board of Finance next week, but when we come back and provide you with another layer of information. So, I, we are all available for questions here.
Second thought, if you have?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead.
Is there ambiguity around what the tuition and cost will be for students that are going to magnet school, or are those pretty predictable at this point?
Good question. The unpredictable piece, again, Chris, is the preschool.
Okay.
So, which is a pretty big factor. I'm hoping to get some more clarity on that in the next couple of months, but that, as you know, is going back and forth, from preschool not being a mandated service for us to provide, yet if a Simsbury resident chooses to send their child to a magnet preschool, we had paid the tuition in certain preschools, some of them still allowed us to go tuition free. That was taken off the table legislatively, now it's being proposed, my understanding, is some sort of a sliding scale between state- Now it's being proposed, my understanding, as some sort of a sliding scale between state and home district. So we may be in a position where we incur cost. That, you know, when we talk about magnet school impact to our district, it's minimal, but where it's not minimal is preschool. Of our 110 or so students, 71 are preschools. So, you know, I understand that, you know? If I can send my child to preschool, full-day program for free, that's a nice option for folks.
For two years?
Correct.
I mean, three, four.
Right.
That's a long time.
Some of them taking the preschool strategy.
And what, any changes to our Project Choice enrollment this year? What's planned with that?
Our plan was to keep that at about the 3% level, which we, you know, were eligible for the increased funding that assisted us a couple of years ago with the kindergarten. But, you know, one of the challenges is, you know, there is a new threshold for increased funding if you move your district to 4%. And then the per pupil cost, I believe, would be $8,000 as opposed to $6,000, so it's considerable dollars, so I want to share that with you. The challenge becomes trying to create a budget where you offset your declining enrollment strategically with the numbers. Where do you put students? What's the commitment? I mean, there's a lot that goes into that. So, you know, with our planning process this year, for, you know, we had the big increase of students, initiating students into our preschool, I think we fell from a planning process. Let's continue on with that number now, see the success rate that we have, how that plays on before we commit. It may very well be a place where the state comes back and really says, hey, you know, you're a district that has declining enrollment like these other districts, why are you not making, taking more choice students when you say you're committed to the program? I can foresee that happening.
Right.
Matt, we have about 140 students right now in choice, and we're just over that 3%. To get to that 40%, it's approximate a 30% increase in our choice enrollment, so it's significant.
One of the challenges is, you know, with the inception of the preschool and full-day kindergarten, we can bring more kids in at a younger age, have them with us longer. When you accept a large lot of students, you're not going to do that strategically across level, grade level. You're going to take high schoolers, you're going to take middle schoolers, you're going to take fifth and sixth graders. I mean, we have found that those students that are with us longer, we create better relationships with the families, our students have more success, so. But to your point, there are dollars there that are available if you commit to that.
And outside of ECS, do you see any variation to revenue?
We don't see anything significant. That'll be something that'll be part of that next board meeting. You'll have information on those.
Yeah, we're going to do a piece on the grants for you. Main drivers being IDA and then kind of grant.
In response to the preschool wishes, this year's a slight in scale, but from my understanding, the following year will end up going back to districts.
This year's not, we're not paying any-
Not this year, but down the road.
I think it's economically inevitable, we're moving in that direction, yeah.
Moving to that direction in there. A lot of the districts in the Hartford area that are up our choice are not the 3%, so we are one of those that did get to that 3%, because a lot of them are even struggling to get there. But down the road legislatively, many districts are asked, including ours, to take on, you know, more students because of declining enrollment and because of seats. And it's getting, legislature bumped up the dollars, you know, for the students, but that's still, still an area where districts are struggling with that.
I guess so. I mean, one thing for us to think about when we say seats available, it's like, what does that mean, right? Seats available with the plan I just proposed, there are not a lot of seats available. Seats available prior to those reductions, there's a whole lot of seats available. So, I mean, that's what makes it, you know?
Difficult to plan.
Just a comment and maybe a suggestion. I think, you know, in the times that we're in where we're focusing on 2/10 of a percent and that kind of thing, it's a budget swing that's important. You know, it might help us, and it also might be an opportunity to help the public understand the budget. It might help us if we had a little more depth in the budget forms that we use around the categories of things which we've identified or you've identified as budget drivers. So, for example, whether it's the changes in FTE, or whether it's the cost of access to technology, or, you know, the cost of outplacing special needs, you know, a little more detail, I think, would be a good thing, you know? We've kind of stuck with the same sort of format from a budget for many years, but in the current environment, it might be better to see, look at those things that really need a little explanation.
Yep.
Those things which are drivers, those things which are concerned about the volatility, and maybe get a little more information out. So I'm not sure-
I had something we can think about at our next presentation.
Yeah, I'm not sure what form it takes, but I just think more information is better, and when this gets up on the web, you know, where everybody's interested in-
Yeah.
-in the costs of, or the Board of Ed budget and our costs.
Yep.
So I think a little more information in this environment's probably a good thing.
Okay.
One of the things that I was thinking along the lines of presentation as well is if we could identify the costs that are directly associated with mandates that we have, we have to supply, that, you know, we, whether it's the instructional coaches we put in place to deal with smarter, the smarter balance or the Common Core, is there a way for us to really let people know that these are things we have to have in our budget that are not within our discretion? We have to supply these things.
Yep.
So that would be just a thought, that if we could somehow tie it back to the mandate.
Okay.
That's actually an interesting idea. You know, in the banking industry, the, a lot of the discussions around increases in compliance costs relating to Sarbanes-Oxley and Dodd-Frank, and a lot of these banks, you know, their compliance costs have gone up tenfold. They've gone from $100,000 a year to $1 million a year. And so they have a very clear handle on what it costs them to comply with mandates, and that's sort of what you're, that's exactly what you're asking, right?
Yeah.
That would be very interesting to see.
And some of that is like hours to evaluation-
Yeah, that's right.
We started to quantify some of those.
All of that, it's really, any of that is really eye-opening.
It's tricky when you talk about-
That'll be easy, right?
It's a little bit elementary.
Right.
It's eye-opening.
I guess my thoughts are-
Just how many hours for administration.
...we've had to create to support a lot of what's coming down the pike.
We talked a lot about that in last year's slides.
You realize we're-
We need administrators to do the evaluations.
You realize we're creating an unfounded mandate ourselves, right?
Yeah. We're asking nice, and it doesn't have to be done.
If I'm reading the tea leaves right, as we're still in a three-board system, you might want to think about a zero budget too, and what it would look like.
Right.
Because it might be coming faster than we anticipate.
Right. That was part of our, that was part of our Board of Finance meeting that Matt referenced, that we know that there'll be scenarios that are being requested.
Yeah.
But this is a very responsible scenario to keep us, I mean, we've been making cuts for years, so I do think we need to be aware that this is probably an idealist setting, but if we talk about everything that we want and then get to where we need to be, where we come to the middle.
My thought is we'd be, you know, from Mike to Burke's point, you know, asked to put together various scenarios that could look like a zero or even potentially below a zero to show what it looks like in terms of program impact. So we've started to, you know, our internal team, take this, this piece, and then start to look at some of those non-classroom functions, equipment, other areas that we can really scrutinize, to start to put together, you know, those scenarios, and then when we present those scenarios, do so in the most thoughtful way, because those become lightning rods for your organization once you put things up.
Because if I'm, from reading the slides, it's about a million bucks, right? If you just rolled over last year, you're a million bucks over.
But I do think this was good, and I think, I think it was responsible. I mean, I think you're not looking for anything outstanding and outrageous.
I think this slide in here, going back to Mike and to others in here, this can get more in-depth, and this is something-
Well, this, don't forget what I tried, this is just an initial with, we're going to have a presentation on each one of these things.
Right, right, because I think so much is in here in Ready, Set, Go program. Not a lot of districts have it, we have-
What study you're referring to?
The one that had the organizational needs on it.
Yeah. So these are things in here to average public. What does this mean in a district? And what does it take to support a program like Ready, Set, Go? You know, and why have these increases been here? Because many districts do not have programs such as we do have. And we're in a unique situation that we started programs years ago, I don't know if you remember, we started this and pushed this through for reasons, because of student population. The out-of-district tuition is a big one. And that's something that specifically with numbers, what it is, what it's costing, it does go back to a lot of-
We can do a good program, look at Ready, Set, Go from its inception to enrollment to staffing and where we are now, and it tells a story, you know?
And out-of-district tuition, which is still something that all districts are facing and looking at. And, you know, and also going back, you know, to the magnet tuition, that is something that, again, is going to be brought up. We'll have a crack meeting tomorrow, and we look at that very carefully, because it affects all our districts and all of the schools.
What is the new magnet school available?
Regio.
What is that, what is their focus?
It's a crack school. It's a pre-K through grade five.
Arts.
So pre-K through grade five, so potentially some-
That's been-
Just a new building.
It's a new building, it's not a new school.
Okay.
I just wanted to make the comment that in the context of this kickoff, and knowing, as Matt mentioned, that we started with a Board of Finance conversation, knowing that we're going to look at scenarios that look different. The culture here continues to be in budgeting, unlike many other places, that we're not starting from, here's everything that people ask for. We're starting from a reduced, realistic range of not just nice-to-haves, but needs. And our job is to bring forward needs, and then your job is to make decisions about what is, you know, what is ultimately going to make that cut.
Right. But I think those suggestions you gave us are helpful, and we'll go back, and, you know, we had already planned and already started to put together presentations on these pieces, and we can tinker with format a little bit, another layer of the financial detail. I think particularly around the special ed that we've talked about a little bit, to help people understand both enrollment, scope of cost will be-
Good. Any other further questions? A good preview of the presentation.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, we are back.
Lydia, I could just, I did get some information on the Common Core presentation for Central and Terracille.
Yes.
It is on January 29th at 6:30 at Terracille School.
Okay. And it'll be up on our website for those that are interested. Thank you for getting that.
6:30?
Yes.
6:30.
Yes, sorry. And we look forward to watching you on SMT.
You're just to come.
Absolutely. Never have enough information on this. Always learning opportunities. We are now at our second public audience.
Actually, this one we could say.
Yes.
Thank you, that was an excellent presentation. Very thoughtful, well-done. I think we go a long way explaining to public. I did want to point out, I have been contacted by a lot of non-public school preschool, and they are being impacted tremendously by the development of the magnets, and in terms of losing some of their enrollment. So it has an economic impact. I know it's impacting your schools, but it's also impacting our community, and I just wanted to make the board aware of that, and that's something, you know, we're concerned, we understand the rationale for it, but it's having a large unintended impact on some of our non-public school providers.
And Lisa, you know, we have our own, you know, preschool program, and we service, you know, we've opened that up to the lottery system for open-choice program. We service certainly our special needs students there, and, you know, tuition-paying students from the public as well. So from a viability standpoint of our own program, it's created a, you know, a counterbalance a bit that we need to think about. So Sue's been working this year, I mean, we're looking at the longer, long-term viability of our own program. Can that sustain in lieu of free full-day options?
Well, and the reason why you even have that program is because we are obligated to service students with special needs from birth to three, and then three, we take them. The town is responsible for them, so that's why we even have the program, and we need to keep the program in play for that reason alone.
No, absolutely.
Required to. It's, we understand, it's a huge problem.
Larger community factor, yeah.
Right.
No, thank you.
I know universal preschool's been discussed over the years in legislature, and it is going to be brought up again this year. You're asking about a lot of unhunged mandates and what's going to come down, but that is one of the topics. Last year, I know the governor is, this is one of his agenda items, is the universal preschool area, so this will be looked at very, very carefully, because should that pass at any segment, it'll have a great change in the impact on districts and states, so. All righty. See no one else in public audience? Thank you, Lisa, for your comments. Our next future business will be our next Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, January 28th, here at the Board of Education Conference Room at 7:00. And with that, I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Motion passes. We are adjourned, and you on the 29th. Thank you.